Welcome back, staff and those that are joining us still from the audience. Confirmation agenda, I'll go to clerk to identify any items to add or delete, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, your worship. There are no items to add or delete at this time.
Thank you. Motion then that the agenda for the committee of a whole meeting held on November 1st, 2020 would be confirmed. The circular move by constable Jeb, section by constable McLean, hall in favor. Carrie, thank you. If you have a particular interest at this time, you can claim it now or when the item comes up. Okay. Go back to the clerk to identify items for separate discussion and their reasons.
Thank you, your worship. There are no items requiring separate discussion at this time.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go to council identify items for separate discussion. We'll start with constable McLean.
Thank you, worship. CW five two, please.
Counselor Noia.
Thank you, worship. CW four two.
Thank you, Constable Lacy.
Thank you, worship. CS one, please.
Thank you, Constable Jeb.
Mine was pulled CW five two, please.
Constable Foster.
CW three one, please.
I'm sorry, Harrison McIntyre, did you?
Yes, thank you. CW, I'm sorry. There are pulled my. You five three.
I'll go back to clerk to summarize all items and identify for separate discussion.
Thank you, your worship. Items for separate discussion are as follows. CW three one, emergency management program and emergency response plan. CW four two, human resources policies. CW five two, Fletcher Meadows Incorporated Development Agreement. Reconstruction and urbanization of Patterson Street, Beaton. CW five three, review of speed limits on select rural roads. And lastly, CS one, additional information memorandum to CS one committee of the whole closed session, September thirteenth, twenty twenty one, development three nine nine twenty seven Mill Street East Tottenham.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mover and second, but the items not identified for separate discussion be received and the recommendation there and be recommended to council for adoption. Move by Constable Foster, second by Constable Sainsbury, hall in favor. Carrie, thank you. The first one is CW three, Constable Foster.
Thank you, Mayor Mill. I'll be quick. It's not a question. I had a great conversation today with Chief Hayden. And just more for interest for the rest of council is in the report on page fifteen. It refers to the Chair of the Community Control Group. And I quote from the report that said, "The head of council is the Chair of the Community Control Group and is such will act as the coordinator of all emergency response activities from the Emergency Operations Center." Just as a matter of interest in the question to Director, Chief Hayden was, do we follow the same protocol in this emergency response plan as we do at council? Is that yourself, Mayor Mill, is the obviously the Chair of the group, but it would fall to the deputy mayor and then it would fall to somebody appointed from council? And so the conversation with the chief was, that is the way it is and this plan will be updated to reflect that. So it was more just general information and I thank Chief Hayden for taking the time today to explain that to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion move by Constable Foster, second by Constable Jeb, that the bylaw be enacted to implement an emergency management program and emergency response plan. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next one, CW four and Constable Noia.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to direct my question to the Director of Human Resources. And my first question would be, does every employee receive a copy of this document, some fairly lengthy document? And when they receive the copy of the document, are the employees made to sign the document that they have received it and a copy sent back to the town that they have received the document? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to the Director of HR.
Thank you, Mayor Mill. Through you to Councilor Norrie. Yes, every individual is provided with a copy. Right now, we provide those through our learning management system and they sign off electronically that they've read and signed and understood the policy. We've also had in-class sessions, one-to-one with individuals because when we first brought this policy out, I believe it was three years ago, it is such an extensive policy that in addition to everyone acknowledging the policy, we had individual classroom sessions and that and we had every single employee in the organization attend those sessions to make double sure that everybody's very clear and had an opportunity to answer questions and to fully understand the policy.
Hey, Constable Noia. Any other questions to the Director? Have a motion then, move by Constable Noia, second by Constable Jeb, that the report of HR twenty twenty one dash zero zero three be received. And further that the corporate health and safety policy of HR P O L zero zero eight twenty twenty one and respect in the workplace policy prevention violence, harassment and discrimination. HR P O L zero zero seven twenty twenty one be approved. Any questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. The next one is CW five two and Constable McLean.
Thank you, worship. Just a few items that I wanted to go over. Unfortunately, over the last few days, a few residents have been looking to read some of the supporting documents that that would come along with with this development agreement for the reconstruction of Patterson. Unfortunately, they were told that they were in draft, so they weren't publicly available until council passed this, but it's quite hard for residents to come up with questions, opinions, suggestions or comments when they're not afforded the chance to read the supporting documents. And by the time they're allowed to read the supporting documents, the decision has been made. So I'm not sure if that's generally how we do things, but I just wanted to point out it was a little bit disappointing that that the residents couldn't read some of the supporting documents. I think we could still, I know it speaks to not having an open house because of COVID restrictions, but generally speaking, when when you're dealing with a small area, which is the north, the north end of Patterson, you're not going to get hundreds of people out to an open house. That's generally not not how many people will show up to something like this. But I still think it's important that we do hold some sort of public meeting or public open house. Council has been able to function fairly efficiently online, doing Zoom meetings or communicating through Teams meetings with staff. And I think that could be done in this situation as well. My largest concern with this is the reconstruction of Patterson is to widen the road, put all the infrastructure underneath to allow plateau to proceed with their development. But unfortunately, if you look at the map that's used, this sidewalk dead stops in the middle of Patterson. So whereas aesthetically, it'll be very pleasing when you're coming into town from the north, it has zero functionality because this is a sidewalk that'll lead to nowhere. Patterson, I would guess that it is the second busiest road leading in and out of town. It's our north-south road that goes, that takes us out towards Tottenham, up towards Alston and it goes right through town. So it's one of the larger roads. It's a busy road. And to have, to have a sidewalk that dead stops, not even at an intersection, this sidewalk is going to stop actually a few meters, I'm thinking fifty to seventy-five meters north of Stewart Street. So once you get to the end of the sidewalk, there's nowhere else to go. So it's literally a sidewalk to nowhere. So the functionality of it is not there. It's not going to assist the new residents that are going to purchase homes in the new plateau development. And it's certainly not going to assist any of the townspeople in utilizing the sidewalk for the children to get home that live on the east side of town from the Catholic school, which I think should be one of the intentions. So I'm not sure if the developer's on with us tonight or possibly I had a few conversations with Jim Hoppy today. If he could address if the developer would be willing to continue what is on the map as his phase two, which is everything sort of coming up to Stewart Street and beyond into town. If he could possibly do that, obviously not at the exact same time, but add that in as a stage three. So right now, we have phase one of his development. We're doing stage one, which is the tent side road piece. And then we're doing stage two, which is actually the in-town Patterson Street piece. If we could add the piece that he has listed as stage two or sorry, phase two, if we could add it to stage three. Like I said, there's no functionality to this sidewalk and it's going to cause problems because people are going to use it and then they're going to try to cross the street in the middle of Patterson and they're going to have, there's no sidewalk on the other side. There's no road on the other side and I anticipate more problems and it's not addressing the pedestrian flow that we need it to address. So I'm not sure if Bruce Hoppy can speak to that request.
Director Hoppy? Sorry, General Manager.
No problem, your worship. I can certainly comment, but I understand the developers consultant is here and may want to address council with respect to that question.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, worship. He's being invited. Here he goes. It's your vendor.
Good evening, everyone. It's Kirk Vendrick here from CF Crozier and Associates. I'm hoping everyone can hear me clearly.
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect. So just to answer the questions regarding the staging of the project. So absolutely, and to make it clear right away, we've already begun our design works on what we've referred to as phase two of that Patterson Street. We certainly want to provide that connectivity to the existing sidewalk at Bright and Cedar Street. There are some construction challenges that come along with that stage two. One of the key pieces is that there are a handful of properties that are not currently owned by Flato along the east side of Patterson Street. And as part of the Fletcher Meadows development, Flato did provide a road widening to widen Patterson Street from a twenty meter to a twenty-three meter right-of-way. And where the sidewalk is currently proposed is sitting in that provided widening. So without ownership of those additional properties on the east side, there are challenges. I'm not saying it can't be done, but there are challenges with extending the sidewalk from what I'll call the phase one limit down to the phase two limit. But with that being said, you know, Flato is certainly intending on proceeding with the phase two portion of Patterson Street. From a construction perspective, there's quite a bit of work to get the storm sewer out to the Beaton Creek and the entire extent of the phase one limits completed. I believe the staff report had a timeline in there of July of next year. So while we're working on the construction of phase one, we'll certainly be working with town staff to advance the detailed design of those phase two lands. We've already begun works with Elektra to ensure we can get all the hydro poles relocated as necessary and working with those other homeowners to try and come up with an interim situation so that we can provide the connectivity from the sidewalk. So it's not only providing a connection to Lily Street where a sidewalk is now provided, but also providing connection to the south at Cedar Street, as I had previously mentioned.
Constable, any other?
Thank you. Yep, there is one more issue I wanted to address. So in a previous report, this is wanting to complete Patterson is going to delay day foot. Whereas I understand that this delay will not affect the Tottenham Transmission Main, which is very good because we all want that to go forward. What is the delay going to be on day foot? Is that something that's going to be started next fall? Or are we into the next year? I'm just not sure of the timeline of the delay on day foot. Someone could clarify that. That'd be great.
Put it to General Manager and he can direct the question.
Your worship, we have Manager Turk with us tonight. I'm not sure if he might be able to provide an answer to that question.
Manager Turk?
To your worship, to Constable McLean, a day foot street project is designed in three phases. Phase one, phase two and phase three, and there are some phases of the phase three as well. Our discussion with the developer and the consultant team through those reception, myself and my director, we came to a kind of conclusion that if the Patterson Street is being constructed, then that section of this road will be closed for local and the through traffic. And then our intent was to keep the day foot open for north-south connectivity perspective. Once that section of the Patterson is complete and then we can start phase one of day for the street so that we at least have one south, north-south connectivity through the town open for the traffic. So that was the intent and we were intending and we agreed not to do two sections of the construction at one time and that will be a traffic issue for us to manage in terms of south and north connectivity through the Beaton.
Thank you.
Just a quick supplementary, your worship. So I assume then day foot will get started next fall. That would be the plan if Patterson's supposed to be done in July, that we move right to day foot street because there's it's bad. Day foot street is bad.
Manager Todd?
Through you, Mayor Mill. I can respond to that, Constable McLean. That's intent to complete the first phase of Patterson Street, which is part of the support today. And once that's complete, the intention would be to start a day for phase one. Once, in the meantime, we will be, as Kurt says, we'll be going through the design review process for the phase two of Patterson Street and the phase two of the development that will trigger the extension of phase two on Patterson. If that happens, then it gives us at least a year to complete at least one phase of day foot. So that's the intent, but if the scheduling changes, then we will have to make sure at least one now side connector is open for the local and through traffic.
Thank you.
Captain Mayor.
I know. Thanks, your worship. I just through Mr. Vendrick, I hope you put a lot of effort into that phase three. Patterson's a very narrow section of road. It's lacking proper width and sidewalks going forward. And we want to make the connection from the Wright Street all the way up to Patterson. It'll provide a safe passage for pedestrians to connect the town north to south, allow the schoolchildren to not have to cross at a busy S section, which we don't encourage. So if we go through an extended period of time with, as Constable McLean said, that sidewalk that's not connected, it won't be utilized. So I mean, I would like to see the sidewalk, the whole section completed because then it will be beneficial to the residents in the town. It'll do a positive and a connecting, safe passage from the north to the south. So as quick as we could work on that, that'd be appreciated. And I will also contest that day foot street certainly needs to get going to because that road serving needs to improve. So thank you, your worship. I just want to share my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Constable Jeb?
Thank you, your worship. I wanted to speak to this. On page four of forty-four, I spoke to Manager Turk today. It's very important that you keep the big two farmers north on side road ten informed on what's going on with this road because they use Patterson for hauling their produce. And it's really important that they kept a price of when the roads are closed and what's going on with those roads. So I would appreciate that they're kept in the loop as far as communication. And the second thing I noticed on page five in the report in the hall route, it says the hall route is identified as north on side road ten to Highway eighty-nine or east on the ninth line to side road fifteen, which was the one we had agreed to. Now, the hall route going north on side road ten, I would like to see if that is an alternative route, which I believe it's supposed to be. It should maybe go to side road ten to the tenth line and then out to County Road ten, so ten, ten, ten. So then we're directing the traffic out onto County Road ten. And when I spoke to Manager Turk, he said it was more to do with small deliveries. So I want to make sure it's in writing that if they have to do an alternative route with the bigger hauls, like the dump trucks or the tractor trailers that have to deliver stuff, that they're going to use ten, ten, ten as an alternative route. And if it's just a delivery, like a purulator delivery or whatever, side road ten to eighty-nine is okay because the bigger trucks, if we do the ten, 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 there's no homes on the tenth line from side road ten out to County Road ten. Whereas if you took the tenth side road right up to eighty-nine, you're passing a lot of driveways. So I think it has to be solidified in the agreement that no big truck deliveries would be using that tenth side road. So if General Manager Turk could confirm.
Commissioner Turk?
Do you remember Constable Jeb? Constable Jeb, we spoke. I think I'll speak to two questions. One was the information to WD Potato Farms and Dorsey Farms. I have asked consulting engineer to provide when we start the construction, pre-construction notices along with all the deter routes to those two properties so that they are aware of the deter routes and they can have their traffic sent accordingly. So I think that's one of the things that I have asked at vending and I'll make sure that those two properties, they are notified before the start of the construction about the deter routes. To answer your second question, Constable Jeb, as I said, side door ten to Highway eighty-nine is an alternative route. That is not the preferred route by the staff and that has been agreed by the developer. The preferred route we chose was the same as we have a kind of identified as a hall out for their earthquake agreements on Fletcher Meadows Development. The reason being that the similar, same hall out, which is east on ninth line to side road fifteen, south on side road fifteen to County Road one is already identified under their earthquake agreement. It has been precondition surveyed, photos taken and all the records are there. And the same developer will be using the same hall route and then there's no kind of figure pointing so that two different routes and easy to manage. So that's the reason that we agreed to use the same hall out as we have been using for Fletcher Meadows Earthworks.
Thank you very much. Supplementary, Constable Jeb?
So you're saying an alternate route that has been agreed to is going north on side road ten to eighty-nine? That's the alternative route?
That's correct, Constable Jeb. And that is not a preferred hall out for the construction trucks. This is just for the small delivery trucks or maybe small material trucks, just in case. But the actual hall out, as I mentioned, would be ninth line to side road fifteen and County Road one. That will be the actual hall out for all the construction activities.
Okay, thank, another supplementary, your worship, so that if we can have it in writing that the that second route, the side road ten to Highway eighty-nine is only for small deliveries, if that can be added in somewhere in the agreement?
Sure.
Through you, your worship, Mayor Mill, I think Constable Jeb, I can take this back and we can do some kind of adjustment to develop an agreement to identify that. But highway side door ten to Highway eighty-nine is intended for that light traffic, but I'll definitely take this back and get back to you through an email.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Have a motion moved by Constable McCollum, second by Deputy Mayor Norcross, that reporting twenty twenty-one dash forty be received. And further than the bylaw be enacted and authorizing the mayor clerk to execute a development agreement with Fletcher Meadows Inc. to facilitate the reconstruction and urbanization of Patterson Street in the community of Beaton. Substantially in form of attachment number four to the engineering report of being twenty twenty-one dash forty, subject to the town solicitor's clearance. And further that a bylaw be enacted and authorize the phased temporary road closure of Patterson Street or the dates and segments as listed in this report and shown on the attachment one, two and three to the engineers report of being twenty-one dash forty to complete the construction related to the urbanization and underground servicing works on Patterson Street and Beaton. And further, the staff be provided with a delegated authority to extend the road closure up to four weeks beyond the closure dates to accommodate construction scheduling change related to reconstruction and urbanized of Patterson Street. Any questions? All in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next is CW five three and Blibas.
Constable Harrison McIntyre. Thank you, worship. Not much to say here, other than I'm really happy that the recommendations that came back from staff were supportive of what the community was looking for. I know that there was some concerns brought up forward by the OPP, but as I said in their report that they will be supportive of whatever the town puts forward. And the one thing I wanted to point out is that the road conditions on the second line right now are pretty rough and because it's not a priority according to roads need study, even more reason to have the speed limit there lowered because it is such an uneven surface. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Have a motion moved by Constable Harrison McIntyre, second by Constable Jeb, that reported being twenty twenty-one dash forty-one be received. And further than that, a bylaw be enacted to amend speed limit by law two thousand two dash one six six, substantively in the form, including as attachment number six to report of being twenty twenty-one dash forty-one. All in favor? Opposed, if any? Motion's carried. Thank you. CS one, Constable Lacy.
Okay, that's through your worship. If we can just have moments so we can motion to go in and then.
Oh, this is a closed session. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hang on now.
Good thing I was on mute, eh?
Do the motion now. When the close session.
Very worship. Yes, a few dear motion before we go into close. Thank you.
Yeah. Move by Constable Lacy and second by. Move by constable Lacy and second by constable P, that the committee of the whole convenes into a closed session.
Nine oh four, your worship.
Nine oh four, uh, PM to discuss one item CS one. Uh, information to the item CS one on the committee of the whole closed session of September thirteenth. Twenty twenty one development of three nine nine dash two seven Mill Street East in Tottenham. OLT appeal update file number PL two one zero two two five. All in favor?